In a while.
In a while. Imagine last month, we didn't have one because of a snowstorm. And here we are. Julia walks in without a coat on today.
You'll be sorry when you leave, but that's okay. I was tempted myself.
Okay, secretary, shall we get right on? Secretary's report.
Yeah, one was, oh, these are.
Do you, I'm just passing out papers, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There was no meeting last month.
No, some months, yeah.
Just nothing.
So, did you have one in February?
We have them in February.
I don't think we had.
It was another snowstorm or ice storm or something.
Sure.
I don't know. We didn't have a forum.
Really? Oh, you didn't have a forum, oh, okay.
And then it was like, remember you wrote something else?
Yeah, I was here for Jan, no, yeah. No, listen. Okay, all right. So. Then we'll go to treasurer's report.
Okay, treasurer's report, we're in good shape. There are a few lines that are expenditure-wise, they're over. And I have explanations if you'd like to hear them. Some of them are. Yeah, well, you know, they're excuses and, uh, it's all. It's usually just a coding thing, like I have. So, there's that.
Okay, just finish reading that.
Um, there's one line at three thirty, it's basically operating supplies. There's a few Friends reimbursements that haven't come in yet, so there's basically, at this time, right around three hundred and fifty dollars left in that line. And there may be even more as I try to reclassify things or recode things appropriately. There's a fifty-four, six-forty line, which is machinery and equipment. That, that line actually has a surplus of almost two thousand dollars. Just, again, it's just due to coding that hasn't caught up with this physical report. And the last line is, that I wanted to just talk about quickly, was non-print media. I believe it's fourth or fifth down. It's a little bit over. There was a reclass and some incorrectly coded purchases, and we're still, we are still over budget a little bit on that, but we'll look back and.
So, we can vote on all of those at, um, on all those changes at the next meeting, or do you want to do it now?
Do, I don't know if you need to.
We usually do vote over when we change things.
Well, let me, um, get the coding correct.
Okay.
And that way I can give you something to actually vote on and say, instead of saying, this will be changed, this will be changed. Uh, on the revenue side, we're basically where we're supposed to be. Wheeler was up a very small, little bit, uh, point six five of a percent. Legacy actually went down a tiny little bit, point oh eight of a percent. Plainville was also up a tiny little bit, point three four of a percent. So, I mean, it's, it's tracking.
Tiny.
Um, going up, going up is always good. Other expenditures are just about roughly where we want to be. The town is kicking in its share, that's for sure. And, yep, that's about all I have on the budget.
Okay, so we'll do those next time, before the end, before the switch budget, we'll move all our money around. Do we want to do a, uh, somebody want to move to accept the report, or shall we wait till, we'll just hold off on it since we're going to be making changes on it?
Let me wait, please.
Let's wait, okay. Librarians' report, past incoming programs.
I have, I'm really pleased about the level of programming we're having, as well as the numbers of attendees we're having. Some of them are, some of them at this time of year are freebies, some of them are paid for mostly through the Friends, but a little tiny bit through my budget. And I'm trying to brand, I'm continually trying to brand some of them as Healthy Plainville, especially the free ones. And that's attracting a lot of attention and a lot of, I mean, I don't want to say a lot. It's attracting some attention, and it's attracting some notice from, uh, other nonprofits especially, and the Chamber of Commerce, which I'm hoping to not only partner with, but get the whole system of programming in Plainville and the surrounding areas. I don't necessarily want to have anything to do with it or coordinate or anything like that, but I'd like to see it advance to the next level. And I think part of that is going to be, um, banding together in different sorts of alliances between not-for-profits and for-profits and municipal agencies. As one tiny little island or lifeboat, I'm pretty, I'm pretty dispensable in the big picture. But if I'm banded together with a hundred others, uh, I think it, the, the sort of temper of it changes. And it's not like I'm a flotilla, but I'm more of a flotilla. I'm much less of an island if I'm woven deeper into the fabric of nonprofits, and even some of the for-profits who have a stake in things.
Well, yeah, I don't understand flotilla and banding together. What, what programs are you talking about?
Um, have you seen this?
It's in the reading.
Yeah.
So, Healthy Plainville is a label, it's an umbrella. Oops. Let's say I'm allied with, and again, here, I just pulled out a generic kind of example, like Park, the senior center, Roberta from Youth Services, and maybe one of the businesses that, you know, now that decides to, to do a, they want to hold a screening of a film that has something to do with, um, food, so it benefits the food pantry or something like that. I'm just, again, I'm just pulling things completely out of my head here. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to homogenize everything and say, we're just going to have one mouthpiece, but there are, there are certain, audiences that I have, and certain audiences that the senior center has, and that Park has, and that most of the nonprofits and the, the tiny little agencies, all doing very good work, have. So, the more we can share and sort of ally our efforts, not only calendaring, but things like aligning the objectives with things that some of the community foundations might be interested in, the Main Street Foundation or CFNGB, BG. I think the more, basically the safer things become, the more funding comes in, the more things are underwritten, and the, the sort of tenuous thread of, um, my agency's life becomes a little stronger every time I can, um, share efforts and perhaps share audiences and get people in seats, understanding about the library and what a healthy community looks like. So, in a lot of words, that's kind of what it looks like. Um, but it's basically about community building. I'm not about stuff, I'm more about people. I don't get up thinking, I'm going to circulate sixteen, uh, Dom Gibson movies today. I get up thinking, how can I actually, you know, maybe change somebody's life for the better?
On this circulation, we're having.
I don't understand this. I really don't. I mean, I, I, I don't mean to drop it, I don't want to.
Sorry.
I mean, you want to get involved with other kinds of community ventures? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I want to put on programs that make this library indispensable to the people of Plainville, and maybe the surrounding communities too. Part of that is going to be, uh, creating alliances, loose partnerships, formal partnerships with other agencies.
Okay. What agencies?
That's what you just said.
No, what agencies?
Um, I have a little pamphlet I can give you that contains some of them. I have like a working list.
Oh.
A lot of them are mu, like, some of them are municipal, a lot of them are just like area nonprofits. So, tonight we're putting on a program in the auditorium in an alliance with the Historical Society, the Historic Center.
In English?
Yeah.
The English.
There's a lot of people there. I know it's not something that maybe you're interested in, but a lot of people are coming to the library, they're, they're passing by signage, they're passing by things that we're doing.
But you've been doing this from the beginning, even trying to build.
Yeah.
And, and what you want to do is expand on it.
Right, kind of take it to the next level. It's not just mutual programming or.
Is it you personally, or is it assistant director?
Well, it's a, it's a team effort, um, from me, but also the other, like, if I'm talking to the Wheeler Clinic about something, they're involved as well. So, everybody kind of has a little bit of skin in the game.
But you're the one that's going to approve, you're the assistant director. I mean, if your, one of the associates comes to you and has an idea, they're not going to approve it. You're going to say, let me go talk to them and see if we can work with our group, with our ideas, the library, holding.
Well, I don't want it, yeah, I don't want it to be me. I want it to be more, uh, I don't want to say democratic, but I want it to be decentralized. I don't want to be the kingpin or the linchpin. That's not my goal. That would take a long time.
I'm talking about approving the program.
For the library?
Yeah.
Um, usually I am the one that says, yeah, pull the trigger or not. This is good, or this isn't good.
So, if the Wheeler Clinic comes in with the program, you're the one that says yes or no?
Yeah, I kind of vet it.
But the library says yes or no?
Exactly.
As opposed to the Wheeler Clinic saying, we approve it.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I understand what you're saying. But it's not like, yeah, it's not a free-for-all exactly, but, um, they do like a monthly blood pressure check, and they're interested in getting deeper involved and doing more, like raising the health of the community, which I'm kind of at heart, I want to do that too. So, I'm like, hmm, how can this work? And I've heard a lot of rumors, the Chamber of Commerce used to be a very point agency on this sort of thing. And they're not currently, I guess, but they're, I'm talking to them, and they seem very interested in it, so, I know, it's good. You know, community building, basically. Community, we have a great community here in Plainville. I think we just need to communicate a little bit better and focus things. Like, I don't want to offer, say it's a quarter, you know, I, once a quarter, I offer something on holistic health and ten things on financial literacy. I want to balance it out, but I want to balance it out in the whole community, like, I want, would like to see that in the whole community as well. So, that's kind of the idea.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just, I'm looking at these holes, the holes that were filled in the system holes, that whole thing now that we don't, we don't have the, um, that's really causing a lot of trouble.
It's very stressful. I don't want to de-emphasize it. I know we're not transporting limbs and blood and, you know, vital organs of people. It's really just a book.
It's a book, yeah.
And it is, you know, when I go to a funder or a politician, they look at me like, what are you talking about? But it's quality of life. I mean, somebody requests an item, for forty years, this system has been being built.
Where are you seeing the gold?
Under circulation totals, Plainville gauge of activity.
Oh, I did, I thought, okay.
Um, okay, I ask a question. I was going to ask you another question, but this fits into what we're talking about. I was just looking in the, uh, books in the area of biographies, and I didn't see many books there. I see a lot more. Is your first walk-in on the left?
The new books?
Yeah, but it seemed only the top shelf, and I said, I don't know, it just seemed like a lot there.
Yeah, those shelves are.
Maybe able to put away or something?
Yeah, I mean, it could be just everything's checked out. It's a popular material library, but, um, and those shelves don't do us any favor, those shelving units. It looks like there's a lot of empty space. There's a lot of empty space, but it's not, you know, it's really not, it doesn't look the best, it's not the best display of.
Right.
What's on offer, you know, at the moment. So, we're puzzling, I mean, it's, it's impossible to find a dirt-cheap, great solution. So, we're continually looking at it and puzzling it, and we're, um.
Okay.
As, as my friends and colleagues come in, I go, what do you think about this? What do you see here? You know, what could you do here? If I gave you a hundred dollars or something, fantastic.
And another question on circulation.
Yeah.
How is the DVD section going? Is it getting less and less, people ordering it because of all the other, we talked about Prime, Netflix, all that stuff?
Yeah, um, it definitely is going down. It's been going down no matter what library, digital library or library system, that you're in, it's a system medium that's eventually going to die, just like the, um, VHS tapes.
So, you're not buying as much?
Not as much. Still quite a bit, and for demand, but not developing a, an actual collection to, to stay put. So, yes, to get back to your question, that systems.
Well, it was in the Current.
Or, yeah, yeah, there was a great editorial.
There's a great article in the Current about it, yeah.
Yeah, so it's really, uh, I don't know, as long as I've been a librarian, you've been able to easily get materials from another library. And you can call it whatever you want. Most of my business comes from the other libraries in LCI. It's very simple for us to share materials, uh, when we don't have something on the shelf. It could be a bestseller, or it could be something just a little freaky that we weren't able to purchase, and we get it quickly. And if it's something like that, most levers are glad to circulate it because they get another circulation out of it, it's useful. But the state's kind of, um, I mean, they're just going through a hard time with the delivery system of it. Uh, you know, I, I don't want to sound too overly critical.
Sounds like they're trying to put it back. It sounds like there's real effort.
Yeah, they're trying to kill it off. And I understand that. From their perspective, it's just an administrative bureaucratic headache that they don't want or need, and they can put it back on the, back on me, on the town. But those eight thousand circulations mean about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of materials, a couple of years of materials budget for me.
What is it costing, around numbers, to cost the state to make that happen for the libraries involved?
Half federal, half state, the whole state, eight hundred thousand dollars, four hundred state, four hundred federal, roughly. It's not that much.
I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find a job for Spencer.
Yeah, yeah.
And redesign it, make it private. I'm just, you know, I've been thinking about it for two months to see if there's any way.
I have a, there's, the, the state.
Cost of cash would be too much.
ACOPED, which is the Advisory Council on Library Planning and Development, um, issued a, uh, report, a long CCAR, uh, task force report through a consultant. I don't know how much he cost, but it was a lot of money. Um, and he said, he made a lot of good points. I was actually kind of, um, apprehensive about reading it because I thought he would just be a puppet shell for the state library, but he made some recommendations that I know that they wouldn't have made. The way they're doing it now, with state-funded drivers, state-funded vehicles, and all of these guys on state time, is the most expensive, least efficient way to do any delivery compared to fourteen or fifteen other states. The best way to do it is outsourcing, because those drivers can legally be on the road or working for up to twelve hours, whereas the state guys can only drive for six, and sometimes they're not even full-time and direct. And everything goes back to Hartford, so somebody has to go from Hartford down to Westport and back in a day, into all those libraries down there. It's not so bad up here, just because there's a lot of human congestion and a lot of.
Lot of people nearby, you know.
There's also a lot of, like, en route sorting. I mean, the whole thing's a mess, but you can't do it with eight guys. That's kind of what they're doing.
And it's state, yeah. All right, we can't solve the problems of the world here, but, um, the Friends of the Library activities, do you want to go?
Lots of activities. Um, sponsoring a great program tonight. The numbers on the book sale this past weekend, I know it's not March, but it just happened, so I figured I would tell you. It's, they had a hundred, they had, we had on Friday night, a hundred and three people to the sale.
Yeah, that's it, what, how much?
I don't know how many came to the, all we have is, um, total numbers, but six hundred people came on Saturday. I would say a really significant portion of them.
It was steady all day.
It was steady.
All day long.
On an, on an average Saturday, the circulation, the people in the door are going to be.
I want to say between three fifteen and four hundred.
Oh, well, she doubled the.
I think the total average is three twenty-five or something, and they make fifteen hundred dollars.
Probably four hundred of the six hundred.
Hmm. They probably did, I hope, did some of both. I mean, my hope is always that people come in and check stuff out, because, hey, numbers are numbers. Even though I'm not about stuff, please take my stuff.
Yeah, it was, I, I mean, I came in, and I thought it was bag hour. I mean, there were people there with the, with the big bags rolling them up in the middle, and it was like at lunchtime.
My son and wife wanted to be here, but you were otherwise occupied.
Uh, they were old business. All right, is this, oh, we'll put this under new, I guess.
The, I'm, I'm sorry, the auditorium seating that was on order came in and is now like deployed.
It looks nice in there. It looks so much nicer in there.
I've got a lot of great feedback. I have not received any.
They think they're comfortable.
There's one grump who says, spend the money on computers instead, but that's.
Okay.
I've been deploying some newer monitors upstairs.
His back hurts, he can't sit, yeah.
I'm looking, I'm consistently looking.
Thing where you had the French toast, didn't you?
Oh, the, um, I just wanted to show the little, where's the little show and tell?
It's, it's, yeah, it's in there.
It's just that, the ad.
Yeah, where should we swap them?
Oh, fifty bucks, so, I thought that that was pretty good. Yeah. They keep the, um, if they don't use the placemats, if they don't use all of them, they'll use them again the next time.
Who's that?
Lions Club. So, it was the Lions Club Breakfast.
This is the Lions Club Breakfast?
That was Pancake Breakfast.
Yeah, Pancake Breakfast.
So, that's actually twice a year, though?
Spring and fall, but I mean, they might, I don't know if they.
Yeah, I mean, it's slept over, they'll keep.
Yeah, exactly.
New business? The, uh, the library budget?
Right, I have all the information. It was sent out, I think, in the February packet. I can explain anything you want to do, you want to talk about. I, uh, requested with, um, what I had hoped was a sufficient amount of statistical and data and anecdotal backup, a, um, part-time staffer for the children's department to free up Erica and Jess, and kind of it would make things a lot more, um, less tied to the desk. So that the, the tremendous activity we see in the summer, we could raise that activity level, raise the normal activity level all year to more of that level. I don't want to just staff up for the summer. I want to put books in the hands of every child in, in Plainville. I want to make all the kids ready to read, but I can't do that if everybody's here in the library doing stuff. I mean, I'm not, uh, it was a, it was a, basically a fourteen thousand dollar ask, and, uh.
It's shot down.
Yeah, I kind of figured it would be shot down, and, you know, Robert said, Robert Lee talked to me and said, well, this, this sounds good. I get what you're saying. Let's mention it to the council. I'm not comfortable with this. This really isn't the year. Counsel went along with that, you know, they were fine with it. They did ask a couple of questions, which I was kind of happy to, um, tell them about. So, that was encouraging to me, um, and they didn't really, nobody said, no, never. They just said, well, when funds come, become available, and they probably will at some time, this is a good, this would be a good thing. I mean, there's a reason that Plainville is, what are we, one hundred and twenty-seventh Angelic ranking, but in the schools, we're in the sixties, low sixties. It's really good, there's a lot of good work going on there. So, if I can, if I can aid in that, that's where I want to be, and I want to get closer to the schools so they consider me an ally. And if they're getting a new whatever, I want to get in on that, like a new big database or a new phone system or something like that. We would just be like a drop in the bucket compared to that huge budgetary expense, so.
When's our next municipal election?
Say it again?
When's the next municipal election? November?
Yes.
So, why don't we plan on either sometime in December, having another meeting with council and the board of executives?
I wouldn't do it in December. I think that's too soon. January, February, yeah.
Assume, pro, might, it's got to.
January, probably, December's too soon.
Prior to the budget, so we can show whoever's on the council what we're doing and why this is. You see them getting it?
Yeah, yeah, to put it in their beds, the early, yeah.
Yeah, the last time we did it, it really opened up a lot of eyes.
It did, yeah.
Especially when we were concerned about losing money.
Right, at that point, yeah.
Yeah.
So, budget-wise, everything went on the table. I made very, everybody was encouraged to cut very close to the bomb, so I did.
How much did we lose out of our fund? I remember we talked about it.
Same thing.
It was the same, I can remember, back in January, we just talked about it.
Yep, so you took.
Okay, so we're down pretty much, are we getting more down, or?
Well, we, yeah, we got, but we got some in too, so, some went in, and, but the same amount went out.
Yeah, rough.
So, we're okay, but it's, yeah, we're getting, we're getting there. Then what do we do?
Well, they, you know, I give them a lot of credit. They understand, you know, your concerns and my concerns, I think, it's just in terms of keeping afloat. You know, they believe in the five to ten percent, you know, surplus, so.
We need some wealthy donors.
Wouldn't that be great?
I think we're going to have to start shaking bushes.
It sounds like I might have to, yeah. Okay, um, unless anybody's got a wealthy donor behind them, um, we can sell our surplus equipment.
Yeah. Is that okay with you? There's just old chairs and the old tables.
Some of those are so skeeved, they shouldn't even be sold.
And I've offered the heavy old tables to the fire department first, just because their tables are really gross.
Fire practice.
No.
They got the big field fire.
That is true. Uh, but just to kind of move it along, you know, the Friends were, um, just last month, fantastically, they were, they purchased about seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of, uh, nice folding tables. They're very light, um, they're really, they're sweet compared to what they, compared to those eighteen tables that are in there. So, with your permission, I'll offer them and sell them and just try to keep it moved along.
Better take those out now, so somebody doesn't see the chairs going into a dumpster somewhere and saying, look at the waste, look at the waste.
Yeah, um, when, when, when that does happen, uh, the building grounds guys do it at, uh, only at night.
Yeah.
You know, and only right before a holiday, right before big traffic, or something like that. It goes to a special area, so, they, they try very hard to not let it be seen by people who.
Oh, God.
I mean, I get it. I'm a taxpayer too, but I'm like, oh, man, you don't want to see that.
Ask them if they want them.
Yeah, put them out for free.
Every time somebody says, I know, do you want that?
Yeah, yeah, okay. They may come up with another idea. Okay, we need, um, an action on the silent study room policy. Is that one of these pieces we have here?
Um, so the silent study room policy, I think somebody might be missing this. It's an old, it's, it, I think this one was from nineteen ninety-two. I believe there are two, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-five.
Or nineteen ninety-nine.
I just want to make it, I want to make it, the, the, I don't know, the pol, the older policies seem to be very procedural and restrictive. People in this community are fairly desperate for meeting space. We don't have a problem with anything in there currently. I would just like it to be a little more open, a little more available, um, and without any old-timey restrictions, such as individuals who want to use it will be admitted by the reference librarians, like, if, if.
Sorry.
If Bonnie's up there and she's like, if somebody asks her, I want her just, it's not locked, so I just want her to be able to say, yeah, first come, first served, no problem. You're welcome to it, you know, thanks for asking. Just stuff like that, little, it's just, it's really just a, kind of clearing up nuisance policies, really.
Okay, do we need a vote on that, or is it, um?
I think it's a, I mean, my take on it is that it's a policy, so I always want to boil it by you. Maybe you want to combine the votes or keep them separate, I don't know.
What's the other one? The other one is internet policy.
I still have a question on this. I do not think we approved it.
It's not approved.
All right, because I remember when you first showed it, and I had a question, that all librarian personnel may monitor customer use of internet. This is like a three sixty turn of what we used to believe in.
Why wouldn't you want me, if somebody's doing.
You, you, but you're saying library personnel, which covers the whole library.
If somebody's doing something illegal on the internet in this library, I need my staff to be able to get me or get a supervisor.
Nope, and you'll never get my vote on that.
So, I don't understand why.
I don't, where are we in this? Read, read down.
The last paragraph.
Yeah, down the bottom.
It doesn't say.
And you have all the sign.
It doesn't say library personnel must. It doesn't say, uh, only these three people. That would be too restrictive, too much of a, if, if I'm out of the building.
You put too much trust in you.
Then Kerry's out of the building or something like that.
In your library personnel. People have dependency to not so.
Are you the same one that said, you're the same one that said, honor your library's part-timers, because without them, you don't have a library.
But you, your part-timers come and go. They're gone, and, and they can be sitting and say, do you know, you know what Ken books at when he's at the library?
I do.
You're not going to believe it. No, I don't think it's necessary. I don't. I don't. Then vote me out, but I'm just saying, that's how I feel.
I know the board is usually unanimous on stuff like this, but.
I want to have a record that I'm not.
Okay, so we need a vote on the, we'll do these policies separate. We'll do them separate so that we can, um, okay, first, let's do a vote on the silent room. I, someone move, make them, that they approve, someone going to?
Yeah, I'll move for that.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
All right.
Okay, okay. And then we'll do, um, the internet access po, this isn't a new policy, right? This is a policy that hasn't been.
No, there's an old internet policy that's.
There's an old one, okay, so the, um, update. This should be. Okay, this should be updated, um, okay, an updated internet access policy. I need a motion.
But you should at least explain the difference between that and this.
It's, it's not quite verbatim. It's almost verbatim. Some of it is just the same thing, right, providing free internet access, blah, blah, blah. The old one, the nineteen ninety-nine version says, the internet is not available for email, downloading computer programs, or chatroom use. Perhaps obviously unlawful activities are not permitted. Uh, it just is charmingly nineteen ninety-nine.
But it doesn't say can monitor. That's a big term. And I, I just think you can be hurt with, you can hear it freedom.
So, viewing material inappropriate for children is not allowed. Is in the old policy.
Which is fine.
Um, how would you know?
That's the worst even, to say that question.
No, it's not.
No, I'm, no, I'm.
No, I'm, no, honestly, I, I agree with the question. How would you know who's where if you want monitor attention? If somebody wasn't keeping an eye on what was there, not staring over your shoulder.
It said can be monitored, customer use of internet.
The old one.
He, because Peter didn't believe in that, it's too simple.
He's not here anymore. If somebody's doing something illegal in this building, I need to know and I need to call law enforcement. I'm not messing around with this.
That just happened, didn't it?
Yeah.
Didn't we just have, um, not that long ago?
Not that long ago, yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
We, we had something not that long ago, where we had to call the police and, and they had to take the, uh.
Computer.
Oh, that was actually Dee's computer now.
Yeah, they had to get a warrant.
What's the difference between a guy sitting at the table looking at a, uh, looking at a photograph of drooling and fondling himself as opposed to a guy that's looking at, had the same photograph on the screen? Now, if the guy's looking at a photograph and a bug drooling and fondling himself, yeah, people are gonna monitor, you know, we, we have no problem monitoring that. And I don't see any problem monitoring the screen.
Neither is illegal as well.
Well, whether or not it's illegal, but if he starts masturbating, it's, that would be a small problem.
That's public indecency, I guess.
Well, whether or not, but I mean, you know, you're, you're monitoring this knucklehead. Really?
Do I have a motion?
No, I'm still reading.
I just have one question.
Well, well, this all could be in discussion.
Yeah, your objection is the monitoring thing, right?
My objection is everybody in the library can monitor.
Well, I just scanned this and it, you know, while I was listening. I don't see why we even need that paragraph, you always talk about illegal activity and you monitor everything everywhere, so why is it even there?
Here's why you need that paragraph. If that paragraph isn't in the policy and it happens, then the question's gonna be, did he have the right to be able to do that? If it comes down to.
You're talking about illegal behavior, you always have the right to do that.
To do what?
If somebody's doing something illegally, you have the right to report it.
But who's, but, so.
But how you gonna know that, you know, monitor?
So in effect, they're monitoring the.
Because he's in a public area and you're in the same public area.
I think they get, I think nowadays you can monitor at the desk. I don't, I think you guys think of people as walking by and questioning, I think, I think he can monitor at his computer, and that's my question.
Oh, okay.
And you can.
Different than what.
If there are programs that allow you to look at every computer anytime long, I have no problem with you, if you change this to library director. But if you're not here one day and one of your part-timers gets into your computer because he has a right to monitor, questions something, boom. You could be in trouble.
Right, that's a, I guess I see where you're coming from, that's a bit of procedural.
Your computer password protected.
No, I mean, well, this one is, yeah, but it's not from me, it's from the reference machine upstairs and the surf desk machine upstairs. Both of those can, the current software setup.
They think they're walking around, and I know you can monitor somewhere else.
I'm not so much concerned about that, I'm just the, the question of. Mon- monitoring is a, you're right, it's a large word, all encompassing word, I, I understand that. Would you be more comfortable with it spelled out as to who?
Yes.
Okay, and would you limit that only to Douglas, or would it be someone like Douglas? Or would it be someone like Douglas and Tim and, because, I mean, full ti- full-time trusted employees?
No.
Librarians. Well, librarians.
Limit it to one person.
You can't.
You can't, librarians, I mean, even if you, that, that way you've got reference librarian.
Sort of like asking the Admiral in a fleet to monitor everybody there, he doesn't monitor.
I understand your, your.
Hey, you know, you gotta, you gotta be able to designate people to handle.
Right, cause you can't expect, you know, if somebody comes in and does something they shouldn't be doing on a day that he's off, on vacation, away at a conference or something like that, who's responsible?
Who, who caught the last guy and, you know, does anybody remember?
I don't remember.
Let me ask you this, how many times in the year has it happened?
Once in how many years? Yeah, I can't even, yeah.
Twenty years, so what, are, are we arguing about how many angels can dance on the head of a pin?
No, I think they want a nanosleep, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Well, no, that's okay, I mean, but, that's, that's, that's fine, I mean, I don't know, I have no problem with that, you're showing the objection, I have no problem with that.
I understand where you're at, but there, yep.
I, I don't think you should feel bad, I mean, you're, that, that's no problem with that.
My feeling about passing rules and regulations is that you pass them for the majority of the incidences. Then you don't try to carve out a minor exception because by carving out an exception, you drive everybody crazy. I understand where you're coming from, but the simple fact of the matter is, I don't think it's gonna create a problem, if it does, well.
We'll live with it. Okay, I, do we have a mo- do we have a motion?
I make a motion that it's accepted as written.
The internet access policy.
Policies accepted as written.
It's, it's the, um, wait a minute, it's not the, it's the, okay.
The, the new one.
Internet access policy.
The, the newest, okay. Okay, uh, I need a second.
Second.
Um, any discussion, we've had our discussion, we'll vote, we'll vote by hand.
I actually just said voice vote then.
Okay, voice vote.
Aye.
How many, uh, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One, okay, fine. Okay, my, my screen died. Uh, da, 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 okay, is there, what else did you wanna bring up, is there anything else?
I don't got anything, I figured you, we had questions and stuff.
What?
When I was away in March, I happened to see something in the hometown connection. Now, I have no problem with people having the right to speak, I have no problem with people giving their voice and I have no problem with freedom of expression. But if we had, if, if the only document, only paper that we could advertise in was the Hustler or a pornographic magazine, I would say, let's not do this. Unfortunately, we are left with some very limited issues here. I would hazard a guess that if some of the religious organizations had played, had their ads placed next to some of these comments, and parishioners said to them, what is wrong with you? Things might be a little bit, wee bit different. I would also hazard a guess that if some of the businesses who wrote, who put things in this things were right next to some of the stuff, people would have some minor problems too.
Did you see the rebuttal this month?
Pardon me?
Did you see the rebuttal this month?
The rebuttal this month was really kind of stupid.
So, it, it's continuous.
Rosemary should not have said anything, all she did was she just took the, the mud and spread it about. And then we had Jeanette re- bring up the word retards. Now, I, I remember one time I said that about forty years ago and I got whacked across the head by my wife. And I understand that they, we have the Bristol Association for Retired Children, the Plainville Association for Retired Children. I mean, I understand that, but they're there. And, but I, I, my concern is that at some point in time, somebody's gonna say, hey, how we tra- how we tell these knuckleheads what to do and what not to do.
But what can we, I mean, as, as a library, there isn't much we can do about it, we have to have.
I wish, I wish there was another place where you could get our message out.
But we don't have to use that place, you get three newspapers, every Wednesday, every Thursday and Friday, every week.
Two every week and then the third one.
Well, isn't it, no, we get, don't we get three every week and then that one comes out once a month, or is it two every week?
Two every week.
Two every week and that one comes out, so you've got two choices that come to the house every single week.
Do you have to advertise in it or does she just pick up the information?
We send it. We send it.
You have to send it.
Yeah, to so many places, um, and it's up to them, they always take it. It's up to them whether they, it's up to the individual paper where they print it or not, it's surprising to me, it's puzzling to me what gets printed and what doesn't. Or they'll do it this month, but they didn't do it last month, it's just.
You're at the bottom with space, if you, if you're spaced.
That's right, exactly.
The hometown connection often, there's some very good pieces in the hometown connection there. But a lot of it unfortunately is a mouthpiece for certain points of view here in town. And for those reasons, I agree with Ken, that, that, and I don't know how much not offering up our information to them would affect what we do.
Unfortunately, everybody reads it, cause it makes, I mean, it's, it's hysterical in some, I mean.
Yeah.
And my copy goes to Pittsburgh too, I mean, my, my kids. I mean, articles get cut out and sent along because my daughters just think it's absolutely absurd.
There was a website, there's a website, uh, you know, you're from Plainville, Lynn?
Yes.
And some knucklehead, well, not knucklehead, some, from, I, I thought, I, some person put up the hometown connection. And, and this is a couple of months ago, in one of Jeanette's articles. And the comment was, what is Plainville coming to? It used to be such a nice place.
What is America coming to?
No, 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 I mean, no, no, seriously, you know, even, you know, we were a nice place back in the day.
It will probably be gone when the editor is gone, let's be that way. I don't see anybody else making it up.
And there's not much we can do about, I, I think we're gonna adjourn the meeting and then if you wanna talk this.
No, I just wanna know, what are we gonna do, I mean, we wanna still continue putting stuff in this thing? I'm just, again, I'm expressing my opinion, I think, I have some really serious reservations, and I have some reservations on the other way. I don't wanna get involved in a dispute with people who buy ink by the barrel, because I ain't gonna win. You know? But I think at some point in time, we have to think about, do we want, wanna put our news in something that is almost porn, well, not almost, but beyond pornographic?
Hot dogs and pizza, um, but it's, yeah, I mean, it's just, this is the one that gets read, unfortunately. I mean, this is like Playboy, you know, it's the, it's, oh, it's the articles, but this is, this is more.
This is only discussion, okay.
This, this is just, I mean, this is what's being, this is the one that's being read, I'll bet you.
Oh, I, Julie, I have no problem with those people over there knowing that Ken Laska is saying this. It doesn't bother me one bit, and they, and these people know that.
I know they, they do.
We know how they feel about.
But, okay, so, you're saying, don't put it in that paper, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, I'm sort of torn between, I, I, you know, I'm torn between that, you know?
The, the article, the, the person that wrote that last article was not in this month, which was interesting.
Well, yeah, and then you got the other person who refuses to say his name, who everybody knows.
My, my objection about that paper.
Yeah.
How can you have a newspaper and not say your name, it's always been, so I'm not a fan of it either.
I mean, you know.
Do you have the courage to say your name and don't say your?
Yeah, if you're gonna say something, then stand up and be, be accountable.
We can be the first group in this community that takes a stand on a newspaper that has been used to hurt people, not help people, and that's, I think, what Ken's saying.
Good point.
Yeah.
You know, you, you really put it in a nutshell, it's used to hurt people, it's not used to help people. It's sad.
It's a vendetta paper.
Okay, do I make a, that we don't use it?
Yeah, I make a motion.
We should all have the right to vote on it, yeah.
I think we, I'd make a motion that we no longer put anything in the hometown connection.
Second?
And do you vote now?
More discussion? And a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pat doesn't know.
No, I'm not opposed, I just come back to, that's what people read.
People read the other papers as well.
Yeah, morally, you're absolutely right.
But it doesn't make it morally right, and that's what Ken's saying.
Yeah.
I mean, if ISIS came out with a newspaper, would we publish in that? No, really. See, I kinda like the idea of what Julie says, like you get to, you know, how long would it take before someone realizes it? Probably forever, but I think the fact that, well, I think the fact that somebody stands up and says, you know what, we're just not gonna put our stuff there anymore.
Some people are smart enough to say, how come they're not ever, uh, put in the newspaper and can I see a tape of the last meeting? And if they do, they will understand why.
Sure, send them the tape with my name on it.
Now, okay, now may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.